Welcome to another meeting of the Lorraine County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorraine County Community College Education Station. The Lorraine County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meetings live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorraine County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Aliria. The meetings start at 9:30 a.m. on most weeks. Now, enjoy the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bob Kish should be proud today, we have a crowd. I know. Okay, well, usually since the new ones are here, we usually style the quote, today's quote is from P.J. O'Rourke, "Giving money and power to government is like giving whiskey and car keys to teenage boys."
Who is that individual?
P.J. O'Rourke. Nope, must've had kids. Okay, um, since the budget's kind of on everybody's mind, just to give you an idea what's happening, is my understanding that the county administrator has not reviewed any of the resolutions 1 through 8. And if the commissioners don't mind, I like, I have not reviewed them yet, I'd prefer to move right into the agenda. Oh, we have a 9:30 public hearing, but I'd like to move right into number 9 or number 10, if you guys don't mind.
Well, 9, I think we need an executive session, so we'll go to 10 as far as I'm concerned.
How long do you want to hold off on this?
Until the end.
Except that, we want to do Kathy P. too.
Yeah, Kathy's here, so I'll have her speak.
That's fine with me.
Okay, now it's 9:30.
Sounds like a good idea.
Thanks. Kathy, is Kathy, okay.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
... as far as they are concerned, and you're representing the county in connection with a financing that's actually going to be done by Trumbull County, but for multifamily housing facilities in a variety of counties, including two facilities in Lorraine County. This is sort of the reverse of what you've done with Catholic Health Care Partners, where you have issued bonds for Catholic Health Care Partners facilities in a variety of counties. In this case, Trumbull County is doing it because that's where there is, there already are existing facilities and some concentration of this developer's activities. And obviously, there are cost efficiencies in them doing one bond issue rather than multiple bond issues in each county. Also here is Michael Heinz, who is with KB Portfolio, and Aaron Sutton, who is with Peck Schaefer &amp; Williams, they are bond counsel on the transaction. Well, we have reviewed the cooperative agreement, we've made a couple of requests that have been agreed to. One is that there be an identification agreement from the developer in the remote chance that you were to incur any kind of administrative expenses in connection with the transaction. And the other was knowing, knowing the interest here in prevailing wages being paid, and it is required on multifamily housing projects that prevailing wages be paid except for certain circumstances. We had asked for there to be a designation now, which is somewhat earlier than when it's actually required under statute, so that you would have the name and contact information to be able to refer people to. And by happy circumstances, Michael is the prevailing wage coordinator. So, we've reviewed everything, everything looks fine to us, and if you have any questions about the project, I think that Michael could answer them, and if you have questions about the bond issue, then I think Aaron could respond to those.
Kathy, when we spoke yesterday, you mentioned the names of the two developers in Lorraine County. Would you please inform the public?
Yes, those developments are Westgate Village Apartments and Pearl Village Apartments.
And they're both located in the city of Lorraine?
Pardon?
They're both located in the city of Lorraine.
And the Development Department, I think, has been given information, specific information about those, what's going on with those projects.
I have no other questions, thank you.
What is requested from the Board of Commissioners is a letter authorizing Trumbull County to, in fact, proceed. Is that not correct?
It's a little bit more than that. The resolution authorizes this cooperative agreement, which will be in effect, you know, on an ongoing basis, and will give authorization to Trumbull County to issue bonds for other facilities that might be developed in Lorraine County by this developer. However, under federal tax guidelines, you would still be required to approve bonds issued for any other facility. So you would still be the gatekeeper as far as the developer's access to tax exempt financing is concerned. So it's not just a letter. When you, when the state issues bonds for multifamily housing facilities in the county, I know they ask for the host jurisdiction to send them a letter indicating that they support the project. This is a slightly different situation legally, where in order for Trumbull County to have the statutory power to issue bonds, there needs to be an agreement among the other counties and with Trumbull County delegating to them or giving to them the power to issue bonds outside of their jurisdiction.
Do you have a copy of the paperwork, Roxanne?
I pulled out of the, that's the resolution.
May I see? Thank you. Is your recommendation, Kathy, that we can approve this legally?
Yes, it is. One other thing I just do also want to mention, and that is that the agreement makes clear that it is within your sole discretion as to whether or not you would approve any future projects.
It would come back to us.
It would back to you.
In fact, there were additional projects.
That's right, that's right.
And just for discussion purposes, and maybe you mentioned this, I wasn't paying attention, but they are also seeking resolutions from Ash Dabula County, Cuyahoga, Jefferson Hancock, and Seneca Counties.
That's correct. The same, the same processes occurring at each of those counties. And the same agreement.
I would, I would move to authorize a cooperative agreement with Trumbull County and note that it is this board's understanding that when and if other future bond projects with this developer proceed, that this board is notified.
And I'll second the motion, and I just wanted to add that in the letter that you sent, that Mary Duffy from Peck Schaefer &amp; Williams sent, said that although Trumbull County will hold a public hearing for the projects and bonds, Lorraine County may also add its option to the public hearing. What does the resolution call for? Because I don't believe it's necessary for us to hold a public hearing.
It is not, and the resolution simply refers to the fact that there is a public hearing in Trumbull County.
Okay, fine.
And the notice of that public hearing included a description of the facilities in Lorraine County, and it was published in the Plain Dealer, so it was published in a newspaper of general circulation in Lorraine County.
Thank you, Kathy.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
I'd like to authorize the release and payment of retainedage to Williams Brothers Builders Incorporated for the general contract work on the Lorraine County Jail System's Equipment Alterations Project in the amount of $12,718. The project is complete and all the necessary paperwork has been received.
I'll so move.
I'll second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Number 12, need to authorize the Budget Department and the County Auditor to create a special revenue fund, number 239, to be called the Public Safety Grants Fund. Said grant fund will receive federal and state grants associated with public safety and the emergency management function for Lorraine County.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Jim, will these be line itemed?
These will be line itemed accounts, you know, funds, that's correct.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Number 13, to authorize the Budget Department and the County Auditor to establish the County MRDD Medicaid Reserve Fund, number 253, in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705.09.1, per MRDD's request.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Number 14, to approve and enter into proposal from GSI Architects Incorporated, Cleveland, Ohio, for a development study for Lorraine County Conference Center and a minor league baseball stadium. The consulting team consists of GSI Architects Incorporated, C.H. Johnson Consulting Incorporated, and Sports Facilities Marketing Group. The agreement is in a sum of $130,000 plus expenses.
Want to discuss, or can I make a motion?
I think we ought to discuss it first.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that. What I'm looking at here is a, kind of an addition to the county's economic development program that happened in March of '01, where we took care of, like, some of our old economy, the downtown areas with Main Street, Glide, kind of taking a look at the new economy and future development of our current base. And then, what I was looking at is, I'm trying to figure out, you know, I was trying to look at other avenues in which this county can take advantage of one of our biggest assets, which is our sales tax. Now, we have one of the lowest sales taxes in the county, and so we need to start drawing more people into this county. I like to go out to the IAC Center for the last, you know, 10 years, going out to the home shows and what have you, that they have there, antique shows, lots of shows out there, but that will be gone in 10 years. So I, I've been talking to a lot of people in the community regarding the prospects of having a convention center to draw traffic into Lorraine County. Some of the studies I've seen have showed that trade show participants spend $238, for simplistic sake, I'm gonna say $240, per day that they're here in, in a, in the county. So what I was looking at was a proposal in which to bring a major or a minor league team also, addition to that, to consolidate some of the duplications that you have with the convention center and a baseball park, you know, example, foods, food services and such, and which would bring the cost down even more. I've been working on this since June, the county administrator's been helping along, trying to research this, getting the, checking out the Ohio statute to see what we can do. And we found out that we missed an opportunity last year when we could have formed a convention bureau and tacked on to Hamilton County's legislation to increase a bed tax to help pay some of this. I've spoke with some of our guys down in Ohio, in Columbus, they seem very positive about a venture like this. If anybody's read the paper, they've seen we missed out on some state dollars, capital expenditures of $1.2 billion that we missed out on that. We could probably have another hour's discussion on that, and why, why we did not get some of our money. So, I was looking at this as just another way to generate income for this county without the taxpayers paying for it. So, the proposal was for the $130,000 plus expenses to come out of the convention bureau that we form, and then use that as a loan, and so that when they do pass, and they're gonna give you probably six or seven ideas to raise funds, such as a bed tax, a hotel tax, which that's basically what that is, a car rental tax, you could do food service tax, because restaurant usage will be increased. They have, one of the studies had a pie chart drawn up showing the percentages of, out of that $240, which 47% of it goes to hotel services, basically, people staying in our facilities. But the rest, 24% goes to restaurants, hospitality suites, retail stores, local transportation, it's a nice breakdown. You know, but the problem is, it's almost like a, you know, what do you do first? Everyone's talked about, I've heard talk for 10 years that they want to have a minor league team here, convention center, everybody talks about the ideas, but I believe that the commissioners, it starts with us, and we have to form a convention bureau first in order to do everything else that we need to do for next year, which is '03. Now, this can create up to 600 to 900 jobs alone in the convention center. A lot of emphasis has been put on the minor league team, that is something I believe in personally. I think we should have, the county needs, I'd like to see a professional team here to instill some pride, to say, hey, look, we have a countywide team here, we can draw some of the income from Cleveland. Cleveland keeps talking about a regional economic base, and somehow, we seem to be a bedroom community. Well, I see ourselves as a standalone community, and we have to take care, care of our own. I see a minor league team also as a way for the community to use the fields. When you have playoffs in the cities, in the townships, they can use those facilities. That's why I like the idea of a county-owned, not a city-owned or privately-held-owned. I don't, I see this as a way that the people coming here to visit Lorraine County are the ones that are gonna be paying for this. But we gotta start somewhere, and we need, I believe we need a consultant to help us design it, help us find out a way to pay for it, and find out what we can afford, and find out how big we should build it. And that's why I submitted the proposal. Like I said, Jim and I, I asked Jim to look into it in June, and we've been working on it ever since. Right now, the size, everyone's talking about, you know, I've seen talks of 125,000 to 250,000 square foot facility, we don't need that big of a facility. Anywhere between 60 and 90, 90 square foot facility would generate about 66% of all trade shows going on in this, in the country. It's, it's big business, it's a way to draw people here to the county. And the way the proposal that I've seen, they identified six areas throughout, throughout the area to build it. So it's not like, I mean, they're gonna come and take a look at a real, a real look to see what we can do, what kind of support do we have. I've mentioned the downtown Lorraine, I've mentioned the college, and I've mentioned out by the turnpike, because the turnpike at least has seven hotel facilities there to help support a convention center. But that's my speech. If we guys have any questions or any ideas, whether you support or not support.
You said you talked with the college?
Yeah, I talked to Dr. Church, he's been, Dr. Church wanted to have one himself there, but everybody had, everybody would like to have one, but no one's ever figured out how to pay for it. No one's ever, I mean, really, we need that first step. And the studies that I have seen have shown that we can pay for it through other means, which means people visiting our county.
Yeah, but the other means are always taxes, and I think people are taxed out, and increasing the bed tax. I personally don't believe it'll help, because with the new facility that they're putting up, they're gonna have a struggle even, even paying for that.
Who?
Visitors Bureau.
Well, I'd like to, well, I'm one of those that'd like to combine that with this area.
Again, you're talking increasing taxes.
No, 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 the bed tax, the bed tax is 3% here in the county.
Right, but that's what's really helping this county, is because we have a low sales tax. People are coming from other counties to shop here, and it increases ours, we're working in volume.
I agree, but I'm talking about a bed tax, not a sales tax.
Yeah, you're talking about a bed tax and some other taxes, too, I hear a lot of taxes come up.
Yeah, and I'm an anti-tax guy, and you guys are probably going, what's a Republican talking like that? The bottom line is, I'm looking out for Lorraine County, I believe the people visiting this county should help us, I believe this will increase our sales tax without increasing sales tax. By having people come here to visit, spend the night, Cleveland, you pay 14% tax, and they need to build a convention center downtown on the water, they can't do it, they're capped out, they don't have the funds. I see it as an opportunity for us to take advantage of somebody else's problems, and I see that the county right now, where everyone's talking money shortfalls here and there, and it's no secret what's going on in the city of Lorraine, that's why I felt that let the city of Cleveland take our pellet terminal and all that, we'll just take that spot and put a nice ball diamond in convention center, create 600 jobs for the city, and you know what? 3% generates half a million dollars. We could even generate another, another half a million if you chose to go up to 6, but we don't know, and I don't want to have a, I'd like to have a document that, that kind of spells everything out on what we can do. Then the discussion becomes, do we raise taxes? Do we do, how do we pay for it, and whether or not we, we are going to do something like this? It's just, it's more of like, you know, here's, here's another avenue to generate jobs and generate a tax base, not only for the county, but for the communities in which it shows up in.
Okay, we talked about a convention center, the college already has the start of a convention center, a smaller one. And yet, when I go to the CCAO conferences, and I know you do too, we're at the convention center at the CCAO conference, and it's my understanding that they can't find locations because of the amount of people, they can have 1,000 to 1,500 people. Small conventions, that's fine, but when it comes to hotels, you have to house these people, and I don't mean separately in separate little hotels or motels, they have to be housed or should be housed where that convention is being held. And I don't see us putting up a convention center under billions of dollars.
Oh, this is, no, this is not billions of dollars, but that's a great idea, because let's say we build it, I mean, I hate this line, build it, they will come, I just don't like that. That's, that's, you know, I'm not gonna do that. What I'm looking at, they also do a comparison of hotels, so we can talk hypothetically all we want, have a convention center, what's gonna happen? Okay? Well, guess what, we might have another hotel built, more jobs, we might have another, you know, who knows? A study might come back and say, you shouldn't have it downtown Lorraine, because there is no hotel services to support the crowds that comes in, it should be out by the mall, who knows?
But what happens to the small hotels? Should we put them out of business?
I hope not, because I know when the World Series came to Cleveland, I couldn't, I couldn't rent out the Holiday Inn out here in Vermillion, they were booked up, when I had family coming down, just because the World Series was in town. I'm not saying Class A ball team's the World Series, but what I'm saying is, there's a lot of hotels, even the city of Cleveland right now cannot support any major conventions with their hotels, but guess what? I would rather have a problem of too many people coming here, can't find a place to stay, than having nobody coming here and our tax base going down. It's like a domino effect, either we're gonna go up and start thinking of ways to generate more people to come here, or we're just gonna go with the status quo and be happy with what we have. I'm not happy with what we have, I'm just looking at another avenue to bring people to Lorraine County and say, hey, here's what we got, here's who we are, and you know what? Akron has their little facility, they have a convention center, they have theirs, the west side just put up their, or the east side put up their ball team, but that's all they have. I'm looking at the west side, Lorraine County could be leaders, Cleveland's gonna see what we're doing, they're gonna say, we're gonna miss the boat if we don't hurry up and do something, because their convention facilities are gonna, at least the IAC Center's gonna be gone. We're not gonna get that business, but we're gonna get the B-sides, the people that are looking for the smaller groups. But we need professionals to come in here, do the studies, point out the map, find out whether, and at that point, I see, okay, do we discuss which taxes to pay for it? Is it economically feasible? So that's kind of the, some of the angles I'm looking at, I guess, so. But we need, you know, if you want, I can have, excuse me, it's something that, once this comes back, it's really gonna be out of our control as a board, because the Board of Commissioners is gonna have to appoint people to represent us in a convention bureau in order to manage this and facilitate this. So this is something where, even though I'm talking about a, I'm talking about something like this, but what we're doing is like the Port Authority, the port, we created the Port Authority, it's now up to them now to market themselves and help out the community. It's the same thing here, we need to create a convention bureau in order to take the lead, and that requires about nine people in the, in the bureau to do this, and if you want to identify who, do you remember who the nine are? I'll let you take that part.
Six directors are appointed by the county commissioner, this would be a convention facilities authority. One of those members has to be a township representative, one has to be from a major business trade association, one has to be from the Visitors Bureau, and then three are appointed at large, with not more than any of the three being from the same political party. Then three directors are appointed by the largest city operating in the county, and two directors are appointed by the other municipalities, and neither one of them can have, each one has to be from the separate political party. So, in total, you would have 11, 11 directors.
In all honesty, Commissioner, years ago, I believe it was shortly after I took office, I thought the same thing. I went through the Ohio Revised Code, saw that the Visitors Bureau could use convention center money, talked it over with several people, and, and I realized that it has to be a huge center to really accommodate the needs, and I don't believe that, well, I know I'm not willing to ask for an additional tax, I think, and I see what Cuyahoga County went through with Jacobs Field.
Mm-hmm.
It's a good idea, but I can't see it right now.
Well, I, I agree, I'm not one for taxes, but I'm one for having other people come in and pay for it, and having people come in through the bed tax, having people come in through a car rental tax, what have you, it's small, but it generates jobs, it generates, generates pride, if, you know, if you lean into the ball part of it, it generates an interest in Lorraine County. We're halfway between Cleveland and Cedar Point, I can see this being a destination place with the convention center. People might come here and then, but might leave here to go into Cleveland, Cedar Point, or what have you. This is a regional area, it's regional economics, everyone's talking regionalism, and so am I. I just want our piece of the, of the regional jobs that are gonna be created the next five years. And I, I mean, either, I look at it, either this is the path we're gonna go down to increase our sales, our, we can increase our sales taxes in this county without actually increasing the tax on the people, because you're gonna have more people spending more money, which means we're gonna have more revenue. I hate the word revenue, more taxes, so there we go.
I think the concept is, is very enticing, we go to a lot of other areas as our, in our role as Commissioner, and we see what the other areas add on as the bed tax. I think that, that's an interesting concept. I do have some questions about the availability of these baseball teams.
I talked to the people that presented this to me, and they're, I couldn't get them out here quick enough, they were, one guy's out working with the Sonics out in Washington, and the other guy's out in California working with the team. This group's the one that's putting together the convention center in Brazil with a soccer stadium, a multi-billion dollars facility. I mean, using, if you, it depends on the numbers, if you want to use Eastlake's numbers, they, they spent about $12 million on an 8,000 square foot facility, depending on Justice Center numbers at $160 square foot, you can multiply that by 90, 60, or 1,000 square foot facility. I mean, you can do all sorts of things, but the availability of teams, I mean, I'm looking at a Class A, because it's more affordable, it's something that the local business leaders of this community could jump on if they want to form a corporation. This is not a public, I'm looking at this as a private-public entity, this can't be 100% government, we have to have the business leaders join in and help facilitate this financially. So there, I mean, I, I was told, well, I was told there's several teams available, but I'm not, I'm not looking to do what Ford just did, which is play a couple of communities against each other to get a better deal. And these guys, these guys are professionals, this is what they do, and they did inform me there are a few teams available. I don't know if that answered your question, but...
Well, the conversation is good, but they informed you that there are a few teams available. How long, I mean, what is our timeframe?
What do I think how this would look in the timeframe?
Well, what is our timeframe in order to take action on your proposal? I'm not prepared to support it today, but I'm interested in it. So what is the timeframe in which this board needs to make a decision? I guess I'll put it that way.
Well, I'll tell you what, it's out there, it's up, I mean, I'm willing to support it, I was just looking at the, they're trying to get it done now, because it would take about 90 days to get the report back, and we could start, start doing this in about two years, I mean, they're telling me about a two-year plan, but it depends, we have to form, you have to work with the legislation, are the legislators down in Columbus, we need to, it's like this, you want to be first in line or last in line when they start negotiating how much money's gonna be passed out and doled out? And I want, I'm looking at more to take advantage of Columbus right now, when they come back from their recess in January.
Well, they're not gonna entertain any ideas of how much more money to give to us, I think they've already done whatever they're gonna do for this year, right?
But that's for two years. What they, what they voted on now is not, is for '03 and '04, but I want to start standing in line for '05 and '06.
Okay, well, I think we've got a lot of things that we can be standing in line for, I guess.
Exactly.
I would, and I question, which comes first, the chicken or the egg?
Mm-hmm.
The study, or the formation of the convention bureau? I mean...
Well, see, I'd rather, well, if we form the convention bureau first, which we could do that, too, that would be fine, but I would like to make sure that we do both, because by the time the convention bureau gets together, we, we experienced that with the Port Authority, how long it took them to organize, get ready, and to do their first loan.
Well, but once we had, once we had money, we were ready to roll.
Exactly, exactly, but I'm not looking to...
So what is the timeframe in which this board needs to make a decision? I guess I'll put it that way.
Well, I'll tell you what, it's out there. It's up, I mean, I'm willing to support it. I was just looking at the, trying to get it done now, because it would take about 90 days to get the report back. We could start, start doing this in about two years. I mean, they're telling me about a two-year plan, but it depends. We have to form, you have to work with the legislation, or the legislators down in Columbus. We need to, it's like this, you want to be first in line or last in line when they start negotiating how much money is going to be passed out and doled out? And I want, I'm looking at more to take advantage of Columbus right now, when they come back from their recess in January.
Well, they're not going to entertain any ideas of how much more money to give to us. I think they've already done whatever they're going to do for this year, right?
But that's for two years. What they voted on now is not, is for '03 and '04, but I want to start standing in line for '05 and '06.
Okay. Well, I think we've got a lot of things that we can be standing in line for. I guess I would, and I question, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? The study or the formation of the convention bureau? I mean...
Well, see, I'd rather, well, if we form the convention bureau first, which we could do that, too. That would be fine. But I would like to make sure that we do both, because by the time the convention bureau gets together, we experienced that with the Port Authority, how long it took them to organize, get ready, and to do their first loan.
Well, but once we had, once we had money, we were ready to roll.
Exactly, exactly. But I'm not looking to fund them as an entity, as a government agency.
Well, I understand that, but we had to come up with match dollars, which was a good investment, I think.
Yeah, I know. Not I think.
Okay.
I say, I know, just like I know, like this.
All right.
But it's one of those deals where, I'd treat this more like a loan to the convention bureau, so that we can get our money back once they, once they impose their sources of revenue, or sources of taxation. Right here, just to give you some headlines, I mean, they're just looking at, they've even mentioned you could increase sales tax to pay for that, which I'm against, and I think we're all against. But there's other avenues to pay for it. That help you, didn't help you on the timeframe, but...
No, I think the concept is good, but I just, I would just like a little bit more time to review it, think about it, and...
Well, our next meeting is December 19th. My birthday is December 18th. It'd be a nice birthday present, you know?
My birthday's not until March.
Okay.
Commissioner Vasey's birthday is already over, isn't it? Oh, okay, well...
I think that her birthday present's in here.
Yeah, thanks.
Entertaining questions from the audience? Or not? Elizabeth?
I tell you what, is that okay with the commissioners, entertain questions from the audience? Is that okay?
I like that, dear.
Okay, sure. Elizabeth?
Thank you. I was going to ask, since there's no motion on the floor, whether this was an appropriate time or not. I have no background on this, so I have a sequence, I guess, of questions which may or may not be pertinent. One, what would be involved with creating such a convention bureau?
Can we answer them one at a time? Okay.
It might be simpler.
Would you like to answer that?
It would also give me a chance to read my scribbles.
Actually, creation of the, no, sir, Convention Facilities Board would require a resolution of the county commissioners, and then appointments by the various authorized political entities. And as I stated earlier, there'll be six from the county commissioners. Three of them are specifically designated from the six, three from the largest municipality in the county, and two from the incorporated areas that have to be agreed upon by the other municipalities, for a total of 11. And this board would do that by resolution, and then those appointments would be made to the board, and they would come into existence. However, as Commissioner Moore indicated earlier, the law regarding applying additional transient guest bed tax to support a convention bureau has sunset. It was opened a little bit in June of this year, but you had to have a conventions facility board in place, named and operating. It would have been rather a nebulous organization at that point, but it had to be, had to be up and running. And they could have, at that point, come to the commissions and ask to apply an additional transient bed guest tax. Unfortunately, when we looked at the regulations, we were in the window of being able to pass that tax, but we did not have a board in place prior to May 15, 2002. That was one of the prerequisites for being able to apply the tax. So any initiative to go ahead and apply a tax for convention facilities will require that a board be in place. And then the state legislature will have to reopen the applicable regulations and allow for the tax, transient tax to be increased for the use of a convention bureau. And then the board, at that point, would have to pass another resolution authorizing that tax, and that tax would be distributed to the convention facilities board. I hope that's simple enough.
Well, it sounds then as if a convention bureau and a convention authority is the same thing? And are there costs to the county involved in setting up such a...
Well, I believe that the convention facilities board is what we're talking about, because Commissioner Moore talked about developing and building facilities. As far as cost to the county, I'm assuming that initially, there would probably be some small amount of cost. It was the same with the Port Authority. We had to, and we still are, to a lesser degree, advancing their money to operate while they get up and on their feet and collect revenue. Unlike the Port Authority, though, if the transient tax can be increased for the convention bureau, they would have income pretty rapidly, where the Port Authority has to build a portfolio of loans that they've completed to be able to receive fees. So their genesis has been much more slower than a convention facility would be. A convention facility would see income from a tax rather rapidly. But there would be some minor outlays from the county, I'm assuming, to get them up and running, but I don't think that they would be substantial.
Thank you. Given the stress on using county organizations or businesses, who are GSI architects? Why were they chosen? And who have seen their actual proposal?
The proposal was passed around on November 25th.
Excuse me, to whom?
To the commissioners. And what happened was, I was just downtown Cleveland, meeting people, and they were showing me the Cleveland's convention center and how it should look. And they're really kind of competing with Chicago. It was a huge, you know, 100 million plus facility, very gorgeous, very perfect, very exactly what they should do. And it's almost like, it will never happen, because it entails taking out the east side of the flats, bringing in transportation homes, private homes. And it was a very beautiful concept, with a marina tied to it and everything else. But it's, so I'm basically seeing them, I see that as an opportunity. Okay, we're not going to spend $100 million. I can see this thing costing maybe 12 to 20 million, depending on what size we're looking at. But there is land available downtown. And so when I saw that, and I saw that Cleveland's probably never going to do something, I felt that was an opportunity for the county here to move in. And since these guys, that these gentlemen that I met with, that they actually do work with minor league teams, and also convention centers that they have a history of doing them throughout the, throughout the world, I felt that, yeah, let's get the best.
Presumably, then, there is no county group that could do this.
No, I personally don't think so. Now, do I think, is there architects out there that could design one? Oh, yeah. I'm sure they could. But I'm looking at somebody that actually has experience and that has done it before and is currently doing it. So not only in Brazil, but in Germany and out west, and in the city of Cleveland. They're doing a lot of studies. They're actually working with, they're one of the people bidding on the projects down on the, in Lorraine on the river. So one of the four.
Then I guess I just have two other comments. And again, I have no background in this at all. One, it seems to me that it would be very much tied to transportation connections. And also, it seems to me that bed tax and other tax increases would come after the fact. People coming in to spend their money at this convention center would be after the convention center itself has been built, it appears to me.
Well, the tax will start immediately, and there'll be revenue immediately on people coming right now, before the, before the place would be built. Yeah?
Joe Rhodes, a former motel manager. There is an association, we were here, it was actually my first trip to the administration building here in this floor, when the first 3% tax was enacted. And as a group, we came in here, we really opposed it, because we knew what would happen with our revenues. And we do a great business when we have the people coming in for Cedar Point, Geogee Lake, and that thing. But that's like a three-month revenue for us. And then we have to pay from that all of our utilities for our winter months, which meant that it was, you know, pretty, very hairy trying to get all your bills paid. There is mostly what I'm here for, is through that action, we form the Ohio Motel Association. And I think it would benefit everyone if that group, or a member of that group, did come and address you, and just kind of give you what happens with our revenues, especially if there's another 3% added to it. We do business in the summer, the wintertime, we don't. And if it's something that could go on all winter, you know, we'd be all right. But I'm speaking for my friends, because I know they're looking at this, and they're going to be a little anxious about it. So if you could just include that association and members now that are still working, at least still have the motels. In other words, they're mom and pop motels, if you want to say.
Right, right.
But we were approached many, many times about, from Cleveland, for the overflow when they had used conventions, because they didn't have the space in Cleveland, and when we didn't have the space here. So we did fill our motels up, and through our association, and we refer them over to Vermillion, or Amherst, or something like that. So I know that everybody's willing, this is a great idea, but I think you have to speak to the motel association and get their input on it.
Okay. And that's what we're trying to do. Instead of having this a seasonal motel business, it'd be a 12, an annual business throughout the winter. Because most of your trade shows are successful between months of November and April, when people are cooped up anyway.
Yes.
And there's nothing better to do in Ohio in the winter is to go walk around in a warm building, and at least get out, walk around. So that's what, I guess that's what I'm trying to do, is to ensure that we have a level of flow. Instead of, you know, we don't want to be a seasonal hotel. I mean, out in Sandusky, all those hotels, they shut down.
Yes.
Right after Cedar Point does.
Yes.
So, no, I agree. And that'd be, that's a, you know, great suggestion. So thanks for coming up. So what's the wishes of the board?
I would agree with Betty. Let's hold it, and I'd like to review and talk to other people a little further.
Okay.
And I'd also like to follow up with some step-by-step information from Mr. Cordez on the formation of a convention bureau.
I guess which comes first, the study or the convention bureau? That maybe that'd be a good question. How's that, Jim?
Have it at the board's place.
Is that okay with the board?
Yes.
So we can have that as a birthday present next week, or?
Oh, your birthday's going to be over, sorry.
Oh, man.
Do you want it by next week or have a conference?
I won't be here next week, remember?
Oh, okay. We didn't know, we kept changing.
Well, that's because of the budget.
Okay. So I guess it's on and on hold. Thank you all for listening.
Okay. Under the Children and Families Council, I'm number 15. Need to approve and enter into contract amendments between the Board of Commissioners, Minister of Agent for the Children and Families Council for fiscal year 2003, Help Me Grow Program, effective retroactive to July 1, 2002, through June 30, 2003. These adjustments are necessary to assure that the maximum amount of funds are used for program delivery. This process also minimizes the amount of funds returned to the funding sources. They have Department of Health and they have Department of Job and Family Services at the end of program year, and the adjusted amounts were calculated based on vendor usage during the first quarter. And these are for Catholic charity services. Total award, $99,831.86. Children Developmental Center, total award, $33,826.35. Community Health Partners Home Healthcare, total award, $43,199.2. The Leary City Department of Health, total award, $321,394.1. Listening Advantage, total award, $21,464.80. Lighthouse Family Services, total award, $72,525.65. Lorraine City Health Department, total award, $236,369.22. The Lorraine County Alcohol and Drug Abuse Services Incorporated, total award, $7,113.38. The Lorraine County Mental Retardation and Developmental Disabilities, total award, $40,467.81. Lorraine County General Health District, total award, $123,651.75. Music Therapy and Enrichment Center Incorporated, total award, $30,797.32. The Neighborhood House Association of Lorraine County, total award, $203,788.83. And Plum Creek Associates Incorporated, total award, $19,865.98. Excuse me. And we need to authorize the president or vice president to execute on behalf of the board.
Some of...
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vasey?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mrs. Blair?
Hi, but do we not want to, want to just make a comment about this?
I like that, I mean, he went like...
No, okay. Well, I just thought that...
Commissioners, this is just a standard adjustment that we've been doing quarterly for the last year now.
Yeah, but it's a standard adjustment. Downward, upward?
Some of them are sideways.
Well, I would really like to, you know, you made a big deal about this. Each time he's come forward, I think he ought to at least comment on...
Well, once you build the pyramid, you've been there, well, it's just another building.
Oh, wow.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, commissioners. The, in answer to your question, Mrs. Blair, the, actually, Mr. Cordez is right. Some of these are reductions in their original award, others are increases in their original awards, depending upon how many units of service they have provided since the start of the fiscal year, for two of the funding sources, which are the TANF dollars as well as the GRF dollars. The Part C dollars are a federal fiscal year, which began October 1. So just to respond succinctly, there's, there's both in this. There's increases and there's decreases.
Thank you, Juan.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Under Community Development Department, I'm number 16. To authorize the Board of Commissioners to provide...
Oops, I gotta recuse myself, possible conflict, sorry. Maybe I'll do some homework.
It's gotta be that.
What was last time? Oh, man, I didn't know that stuff was still up there. Take that with me.
Number 16, to authorize the Board of Commissioners to provide private owner rehabilitation assistance on behalf of four homeowners through Community Housing Improvement Program, Township Program, as follows. A. For Timothy and Tasha McLurich of Leary Township, for repairs to the exterior and interior of their residence, such as the roof, furnace, plumbing, electrical, et cetera. The estimated cost was $28,560. Three bids were received, and the lowest and best bid is in the amount of, this should be a correction, of $24,999.10, apologize, from Birch Builders Incorporated of Lorraine, Ohio. The property owners evaluated this bid and recommends the awarding of a contract on their behalf. And B, for William and Sandra Price of Leary Township, for repairs to the exterior and interior of their residence, such as roof repair, basement, electrical, and heating. The estimated cost was $27,675. This project was bid three separate times in order to receive adequate bids. The lowest and best bid received was in the amount of $24,998.96, was also from Birch Builders Incorporated of Lorraine, Ohio. And the property owners have evaluated this bid and recommends the awarding of a contract on their behalf.
Ron, I do have a question. Are these in the form of grants or loans?
These are loans, commissioners.
And they will be paid back sometime, and how...
Yeah, once they, the property transfers ownership, they won't be making monthly installments, but when they sell, or the estate is settled, in some cases, it will be paid back at those points.
Okay.
I will also point out, we are obligated by the grant agreement to do 10 properties. This will bring us, if these two are approved, to a total of six. We'll have four more to complete between now and June, and I think we're on track to do just that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ron. Just wanted to make sure that was part of the resolution.
Also moved.
Saka?
Any more discussion?
No.
Mrs. Blair?
Hi.
Mrs. Vasey?
Hi.
Kathy, would you call Commissioner Moore back in?
It's pretty fast.
Give him enough time to take some Excedrin, though.
I took mine before the meeting started.
Oh, okay.
Item number 17. Advertised for bids for the demolition of the former Brighton Township Schoolhouse in Wellington, Ohio. A mandatory walkthrough is scheduled for Monday, December 30, 2002, at 2:00 p.m. This will be received until 2:00 p.m. on Monday, January 6, 2003, here in the Back Conference Room. I'd like to publish the notice in the Chronicle, Telegram and Morning Journal on December 16th and 23rd, 2002.
Some move. Saka?
Discussion?
Yes. What's the reason for us being involved with demolition of a school?
This was part of our 2002 CDBG grant application. It has been declared slum and blight and it needs to come down and so CDBG dollars are being used to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Ron.
And the township is also putting up a portion of the funds as well for this project.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Number 18, to approve and enter into agreement with Group C Publications to advertise in Business Facilities Magazine to further the economic development and job creation initiatives of the Board of Commissioners. Advertising would appear as a one-half page ad during the months of January, February, May, August and October of 2003 in the amount of $19,280. Might authorize the President or Vice President to execute any necessary documentation on behalf of the board.
Some move.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yes. On the personnel sheet, there's a request to hire an economic development specialist and I would ask that the board hold up on this until we hire that specialist, possibly use this marketing money to pay the wages of the specialist. I think we've got the cart before the horse over here.
Now, we hadn't, we budgeted enough money for not only employees but marketing dollars. So, there is sufficient funds for both.
Yeah, but there's more to marketing than just advertising. I believe you really have to get out there and, and talk with the businesses, make contact, decide what type of businesses you want in the county before you just market. I mean, you don't want, I think you should be selective in the businesses that come in here because too often I think we allow businesses that come in, say with, say chemicals or something and, and sometimes we sacrifice job, health for jobs. I think we, we can be selective. We've got the lake, we've got railroads, we've got everything that any business would ever need and it would be easy to market and sell Lorain County. But there's more to marketing than just placing ads and I think we need to hire the person.
I would love to hire a marketing director. Is that what you're asking?
No, not a marketing director. I'm saying an economic development specialist. We need jobs. We don't need paper. We don't need to put pictures on paper or, we need somebody that will come in here, determine what type of jobs we want in Lorain County, where we want them to locate. If it's a chemical factory, put them over where the chemicals are and, and somebody evaluate and stand, and look over it. But I think we really need to have a long discussion on that. I've got a real long list over here of what I'd like to talk about, but I don't want to take the time today, but I would like to talk with this, about this with a specialist. I've got a lot of ideas on bringing jobs into the county and.
Guess the convention bureau wasn't one of them, huh?
No, no. Mine are inexpensive. It won't cost any money and it won't cost taxpayers any dollars. It may cost always some money, but.
Well, I believe you get what you pay for.
We've talked, we've talked about it before and I've talked over some of this with Ron and.
When I, when I came to the county, they used to spend $5,000 on marketing and I appreciate the support I received and I know you didn't support it in '01 when it went, when it was presented, the hundred thousand a year and I didn't expect you to support it again. So, this is just part of the, the economic development package that we did in March of '01. Nobody, we know how great we are, but nobody else does. I think this is the beginning of some great things. It's a little slower than I wanted and I don't know if you have, you're done with your report yet, haven't seen it, that I asked for last week. No, do we have to get up? Just yes or no? Are you done with that?
It's done, we have submitted.
Okay, okay.
We put the final draft on it.
Okay, but I'm in support of this type of marketing dollars. We have it in the budget and it's about time we start doing it.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
No, I think it's a waste of money at this time.
Okay. Item number 19, need to approve and enter into contract with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for in-kind services in conjunction with the countywide environmental strategic plan. Resolution number 02794 authorized a contract with Camp Dresser and McKee for the completion of a countywide environmental strategic plan. This investment allowed Lorain County to be eligible for matching services from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for the study of watersheds which are designated as areas of concern, specifically the entire Black River watershed. Lorain County therefore qualifies for matching services in the amount of $164,084. The Army Corps will be completing the following tasks in the Black River watershed. Number one, for conducting an inventory study of the east branch of the Black River from Crow Creek to the confluence with the west branch in Leary's Cascade Park. The next one, to conduct a field inspection of the basin and reperin corridor associated with the site in Pittsfield Township on the west branch of the Black River and Route 303 and other various points along the west branch upstream of Route 303 that are sources of erosion and/or runoff. And to conduct a remediation site identification study for six to eight specific sites of severe bank erosion in Lorain County, the portion of the Black River areas of concern that contribute to significant sediment loads. The county prosecutor's office has reviewed and found no legal concerns. Need authorize the President or Vice President to execute the contract and supporting documentation on behalf of the board.
Also move.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yes. Ron, I'm not sure if you know or not, but I pulled up some information. There, there's federal funding sources for watershed protection projects, there's 69 different sources here for grants. Have you viewed any of these sources? If not, I understand, but, and I would like to give you this information.
We would love to have that information. We're still checking the last information you brought from NACO, so yeah, we are.
Okay.
Commissioners, with this, if I might, we often hear there is no such thing as a free lunch. This may be darn close to it. Because you've authorized the environmental study, we are eligible for, with that as our local match, the money you've already committed, we're eligible for this services up to $164,000. They, just simply with this resolution, we're asking for you to go ahead and accept that services to that dollar limit to actually investigate. One of the things that we talked about with the Board of Commissioners when we were studying or looking at, doing the environmental study was to actually begin the implementation phase and this will go on concurrently as an implementation phase as we do the work both through the environmental strategic plan and the efforts of the Black River rap. So, that's what this is. Now, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Exactly what will these funds by the county that the NOAACA plan doesn't already have in it?
I'm not sure.
In other words, exactly, we pay this money to a consultant. What are we going to get from that consultant that this NOAACA plan doesn't already have in it that maybe we could make a few changes to?
Well, I think what, she's, she's comparing what we voted for last time.
Right.
What you're saying here, this is just, we're getting $164,000 because we spent $164,000, right?
Correct. $134,000.
And we're getting.
And you're getting $164,000.
$134,000.
And what that will do is go out and do these items that are bulleted in here. It'll go out and actually inventory what's going on in the rivers, try and determine where those non-point source solute, pollutants are coming from. But that's completely different than what NOAACA has been doing.
That's not in the study?
No.
Okay, that's not what I understood, but.
Yeah.
You had a meeting the other night with the townships. What was the township's reactions?
It was more than the townships, it was communities. We invited about 60 people, 65 people to attend that and, you know, it was the first kickoff, it was on the 10th, which was Tuesday night. We had about 48 people in attendance and I think they're still wanting to know a little more detail, but I think because we had 48 of the 60 people invited, there's a willingness to dive in and figure out what's going on and what we can do better with, in terms of our environment here in Lorain County. So, I thought it was well-received. We'll know better how it truly is received after we get into about the second, third series of meetings or arguments.
You ought to be getting pretty good at that by this time.
I came here with a black head of hair.
I wish you could color it.
I've always told everybody and I've told Commissioner Moore the same thing, you can come in here with dark hair. Three months after you're here, it's white. And I don't know if it's a sign of wisdom or stress.
Not wisdom on my part.
Oh, we could say it is, though.
At least you're not losing it. It's for me doing this all day.
Any more discussion?
All you're authorizing here, though, is simply to accept those services that are available because we're doing the environmental study, so that's what it is.
Thank you and good job.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
I voted no on the other, but this is freebie money, so I will vote yes.
Item number 20, to authorize the Commissioners to disperse coastal erosion loan funds to Bender Development Company, Richard Bender and Gerald Hyde in the amount of $99,939.64 and to pay off the higher water development authority loan dollars in the amount not to exceed $221,807.19 for the coastal erosion loan made to Hugh Keating, in the original amount of $225,650. And I need to mention also, Mr. Twining's resolution, he's asking for an additional appropriation of $70,000.
This is the last I intend to come here, but if I may ask, I'll come back. This is somewhat complicated. There's two things going on. First of all, about a month, six weeks ago, you approved a erosion control loan in the city of Lorain to Bender Corporation. That loan, if you remember, was for about $386,000. They're getting it as reimbursement and it's being dispersed with this particular loan since it's so large in its size and scope in installments based on the work that they've already done. We found out last Friday late that we will be receiving a check from OWDA on Monday, the 16th, for $99,939.64. We need to disburse that quickly to Bender because once we receive that money, we, the county, and therefore Bender Corporation, will be starting to accrue interest. So, we want to get that out of our hands and into his as quickly as possible. We're closing down books and opening books up, so we're asking for this authorization on the Bender part rather quickly in order, because we didn't anticipate that first installment for Bender's loan to come until calendar year 2003, we did not have. We had about $33,000 in an appropriation left for erosion control, so we need to increase that by 70 in order to write that $99,000 check. The second part of this, we actually have an individual that, Mr. Keating, that has a loan, has done a good portion of his work through our loan. His loan amount was about $221,000. He has decided with the drop in interest rates and his investment dollars that he is financially better off to go ahead and satisfy, pay out our loan to both us and OWDA and we can buy that out or pay that out to OWDA, be whole and he will use his own personal means to finance for the remainder of the life on that. In order to buy this out, we have about $90,000 that was available in our treasury that we need to return to OWDA because he never requested that money and then we have to pay out the principal and interest on the money that he did loan. So, the amount that we are sending back will not exceed that $221,807.19 because books are closing. We're asking that we be authorized to do that. If not, we will continue, even though he's paid us on Monday, we will continue as a county to accrue the interest rate till OWDA's paid back. I know that may be confusing, but that's what's going on with this resolution.
Well, that interest goes back to OWDA, doesn't it?
1% roughly stays with us. It may be one and a quarter. He's paying, I think, roughly 6% and OWDA is charging the county about five and a half and that fluctuated at the time we set the loan agreement and he signed, but it was for the life of the loan. He's paying this off early because he feels that he can get better financing outside of this because of the decline, so he has the ability to do that. We're going to be made whole on our part of the interest that's our portion, so this is kind of a win-win. And Mr. Barker has worked hard on this and has covered ourselves with this, so I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, also move.
Second. Any more discussion?
Does that include the extra 70, that motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under the Solid Waste Management District, number 21, need to ratify the solid waste plan as recommended by Dan Bilman, the Solid Waste Management District Director.
Do you want to hear a brief from Dan? Now, Dan, would you like to come up and speak?
I got my Christmas card. Dan Bilman, Lorain County Solid Waste Director. Good morning, Commissioners.
Nice tie, Dan.
Appreciate you giving me just a couple minutes to speak. This plan has been worked on for the past year of which, of which Commissioner Moore was a part of the policy committee. It is a very, very good plan. EPA calls it a stellar plan, which that's very unusual for EPA to ever say that. It's one of the few plans in the state that had very little paperwork when it come back. And this morning, I'm asking that, excuse me, you ratify the plan and be first ones in the county to do so, show leadership on this plan. All the other entities, the villages have been sent the plan to ratify and that'll be coming back in within the next 90 days. And then when it's ratified by everybody, goes down to EPA to be ratified and by June we'll have a new plan for the solid waste district.
And you took care of the waterfall? Because I believe you did add it in. You at one time had the reduction to the communities by about $250,000, but I think you made that back and made that whole again, correct? The matching grants? It was down to a million two. You put it back up to 1.47, I believe?
No, it's still at 1.2.
It is still at 1.2?
Yes.
Why is that? Did I miss that?
That's what's in the plan, that's what everybody approved it.
I thought the one I saw showed the change, the 1.47. You got it up there.
No, sir.
Jim, didn't we talk about that? I saw it came back with 1.47.
Uh.
I have one document, I got.
I, I can't.
I have to go back this thick of papers, let's find it?
No, what we've, what we've done, okay, it's, it was, the previous plan was nine, 900 and some thousand. We upped it to 1.2, although we have been giving the communities much more than it would.
Dan, is this the closed-loop grants? Is this what we're talking about, the closed-loop?
No, it isn't. That's another closed-loop grant, so 70 million.
Is this, is this blue bag?
Excuse me?
Blue bag?
That's a blue bag program, yes. That's what we call the community grants.
Okay, so, that's the one we discussed in, over the last few weeks. I, I think the issue, Commissioner, was that I indicated to the board that we were rewarding grant money in excess of what the original plan called for and it was 1.4 million and some change.
Mm-hmm.
Because there was additional dollars available within the solid waste accounts to give the communities more resources. I'm not sure whether I saw a change to the plan that brought it up to the 1.4, but I do know it was increased and if that's an issue, we can wait until next week. A lot of our initiative, and you and I talked and other, and the other Commissions have also on the, making sure we got the money for the environmental revolving loan fund that's going to be a part of the new solid waste plan and changing some definitions that allowed us to work directly with nonprofits for the betterment of the community. So, those things are all in the plan, correct, Dan?
Yes, Jim.
Obviously, everything but the one.
Well, does it have to be at the one, at the 1.2? If it was 900,000 and you're indicating that it's 1.2 million now and in the past we have given more when it's been available, does it need to be increased or is the 1.2?
I'm going to grab that. Is that your plan, Dan?
1.2 is, is an increase in what we've had in the previous plan. And.
Well, my question.
This year we gave out about 1.4 plus.
Okay, so my question is that if it says 1.2 and we have the ability to give more, we are not constricted at 1.2. 1.2 is.
That's correct, Commissioner. And we have been right along giving out between 1.4 and 1.5.
Yeah, but sends a wrong message to the townships and everybody else that you're taking money away from their budgets. I told them, don't worry about it, I'll make sure it gets to 1.5, so now you see the dilemma I'm in.
We did not take any.
And I thought I had this taken care of, I thought I had this taken care of and I, obviously, I did not. So, I'm looking, I'm looking at Commissioner Vassie's, I'll wait till my, my book comes in. That's just my position.
You, uh.
I appreciate the work on getting the, the nonprofits in. I think that was very important, how we worded that. I remember we changed that and it went smooth. I appreciate that, but...
What I was going to say, I do remember you wanting to increase certain line items in the budget.
And that was, and I saw, I saw the document come by. That was increased not to the 1.5, but it was 1.470. And that's why I thought that's close enough.
Now, the document you've seen was 1.4, was this year's community grant that we gave out.
Dan, are you getting comments back from the communities?
The plan has just gone out for ratification, so I haven't had any comments yet, just from one, that was from Vermillion. And they had a question that was answered very readily.
I can find it, though. Yes, I can find it. Why did I know this was going to happen?
Commissioners, this is not a time-sensitive issue because we still have quite a while to deal with this before it...
Would you like to deal with it next? Would you like to deal with it and get it corrected and then come back to us or discuss it?
I know that you have a lengthy and full agenda and some other very large issues to deal with. So, we can actually review this and come back next week or even in January with this, correct, Mr. Bealman?
That is correct. I put it before the Commissioners today, hoping that you'd ratify it and be first ones in the county to ratify it and show some leadership.
Well, thank you, Dan. So, we don't ratify, we don't show leadership, right?
Well, we'd be the first one, that's all.
I think his statement is, is well-taken.
And a crown vic cost less than a tars.
That's not the point, and that's not part of our discussion today. I'm going to reiterate what I said. If we are not, we can give more than the 1.2 million. And so, I don't think we should constrict ourselves to a base. If it's 1.4, almost 1.5, does that then require us to, in fact, do that? I think we want to allow ourselves a little latitude.
No, I...
That'd be my comment.
That can be changed in the near future. It doesn't, you know, stifle us from approving the plan as the balance of the plan.
You can always give more, but the plan would...
We've always given more. We have always given more, okay? That's not the issue.
Okay, so, do we want to go on?
Are we holding this? Can we hold this?
I'll say approve, and then, we can always go back to that issue.
Okay.
It's already been sent out to the political subdivisions.
All right.
It's already out to all the subdivisions, yes, Commissioner?
Approve it. I move to approve the plan and then review that one particular issue in the future.
I'll second.
Any more to question? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
No.
You don't want to approve the plan at all?
I am not approving that plan, so it's passed.
Domestic Relations Court, number 22, to approve the Lorraine County Domestic Relations Court's application to the Ohio Department of Youth Services, Title II Formula Grant Program in the amount of $50,000, to enable the court to establish the juvenile school liaison mediation project in coordination with the Conflict Resolution Center of the West Shore Incorporated. This program will provide education programs, referrals, intake assessment mediation services, case management and follow-up, and a six-month post-mediation evaluation to help reduce school truancy. The youth targeted for services will be between the ages of six to 15 years old. The program is family-centered and emphasizes the participation of parents and/or guardians. There will be no obligation from the Lorraine County General Fund provided towards this program once the program has ceased.
Anybody from Domestic Relations here want to speak on that? I'll second.
Sorry.
Oh, we have someone. Yeah, go ahead.
I thought you needed us up here. I'm Dan Ritter, Domestic Relations Court. What's nice about this program is we already have the school liaison in place. Hopefully, we get a continuation with this, two years. So, this is ultimately a three-year program, $50,000 each. Once it's over with, the school liaison will go, will be continued through the reclaim grant that we receive each year.
Are you saying that you'll get the funding for this for three years? Grant funding?
Well, hopefully. If we get this one, this is 50,000 for this year. We're also able to get the grant as well, second year and a third year.
Okay.
So, ultimately, 150,000.
So, we can address this again next year?
Yes.
Okay, but right now, we're saying this is one year and the general fund will not fund it if it is not funded through the grant next year?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, good job. Thanks for coming.
And there's no local match.
No, no local match.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Under the County Engineer, number 23, to award contract to Independence Excavating Incorporated, Independence, Ohio, in the amount of $970,451.85 for the Henderson Drive and Bankment Reconstruction Project. The engineer's estimate was $1,258,666.5. This was the lowest and most responsive bid received complying with specifications. This project is being funded with 80% federal funds and 20% Ohio Public Works Commission funds. This award is made contingent on OPWC approval of the request to proceed. The county engineer has reviewed and recommends approval.
I move.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Yes, I have some discussion on it.
Sorry.
I don't know. I know that there are some townships that really need this, and I appreciate that. But I'm very concerned in regards to funding this project. I understand that the first year, it'll cost about $70,000 and continue to go up until year 10, it's going to cost $109,000.
What are we talking about, Commissioner?
Aren't we talking about...
Commissioner, we're on issue number 23.
Talking about this right here, the engineer bridge?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry. I was reading something here while she was reading that. Sorry about that.
This is for the failing and banking?
Yes, I understand what this is.
Mr. Corney has brought back a lot of money.
I heard enough about that bridge.
Well, actually, we're getting a no vote.
We'll resolve the situation, so none of us will have to hear about it.
Aye.
Mrs. Blair? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Definitely aye.
Back to Commissioners, under number 24, to approve the Anna Appropriation Resolution for fiscal year 2003, ending December 31, 2003.
How do you guys like to work on this one? Should I make a motion? I'll make a motion to accept for discussion purposes. How's that?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Time to talk. Okay, let me, if the Commissioners doesn't mind, I'll make a statement first. How's that? In August, we passed a budget that consisted of $58.964 million in total expenditures with revenue of $48,645. Instead of revenue, let's say the word tax. So, basically, we were spending more, and that was, I got a little parentheses from somebody that says wishlist. So, that was in August 29th is when we passed that resolution, on December 3rd. I finally got the budget, and it was still not corrected. Mr. Corney has called me from Columbus, and I shared my discomfort with what I read. And he met on Wednesday. We discussed again on Thursday. And I think it was a, I think the team was put under a lot of stress to try to get together and bring to this Commissioner, this board, a balanced revenue budget. And I hope, which I got at 8:30 today, and I hope that is what was given to me, and I hope the other Commissioners received this this morning.
Thank you.
Okay, so, at 8:30 this morning, we now, in our hands, have a balanced revenue budget. That's my statement. Anybody have any questions or any other statements?
Yes. Jerry, maybe you can help me with this. ORC 117.10 was amended and required notification to the State Auditor of a creation or dissolution of a public office. Now, we have discretionary funds available, and, for example, I'll use the Glide. Is that creating a public office? Or another example would be the building department. Is that creating another department? If so, this would have to be reported to the State Auditor?
I haven't looked at that statute specifically. I would not believe the Glide would constitute that.
I know, excuse me, Jerry. At one time, we had a problem when we started funding the transit, and the State Auditors came in and questioned, and I think that, maybe John can help me here, made it a part of our audit or something.
It was part of the overall audit.
Right. Now, do we have to go through that with all these other things that we're funding, such as the Glide?
I don't think that applies to everything that we fund. It does apply to internal offices within the county. It gets involved with what they call a component unit of the county, and that gets into a whole...
Jerry, I don't think she can hear you.
That deep voice you got.
I'd ask for those old microphones. What that gets involved into, what the auditors refer to as what is a component unit of the county, and that's a very complex legal definition. But I don't think outside agencies such as Glide...
Airport.
I think we decided that the airport was a component unit. That's, again, it goes to the auditors, and they debate about it for about a year and then come back with a decision, but...
What about the chamber?
Chamber's not. Port Authority was not. But anyway, I'm certain the Glide would not be the building department would be, to specifically answer your question.
Well, Jerry, if I give you a list of all these discretionary areas that we're funding, can you just check it and see if there's any questionable areas in there?
Okay.
And then, also, a reserve balance, the reserve balance accounts can only be used for the purpose that they were established for. So, in other words, all these discretionary areas and the amounts that we put in here can only be used for those, those programs.
Well, any levy funds obviously have to go to whatever they are used for. If you appropriate and allocate monies for certain departments and certain uses, then they have to be used for those. That does not mean that, you know, you can't take those back.
During the year.
But the question is, can you allocate these for specific uses? And then, can they take them and use them for something totally different? The answer is no.
Okay, so, then...
Right. They could come back and be...
Or portions of them?
Right.
Okay, thanks. That was the questions I have for that.
Thank you. The Commissioners have any questions regarding the budget? Are you guys comfortable with getting a balanced one?
I'm comfortable with a balanced budget, but I'm concerned about the discretionary funding.
Mm-hmm.
John, some of us went differently in different areas.
That's correct.
And there's some areas where there are, there's not two Commissioners that have agreed. What are you going to do with those?
Mrs. Vassie, I believe that the document that you were handed after the board meeting began includes a 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th column where it says consensus funding level. And those amounts, each, at least two Commissioners have agreed to that amount. Where there is not an agreement by two or more Commissioners, that amount has returned to zero.
Okay, thank you. With the exception of...
What?
No.
No.
No. No, there's one, just give me one second. Well, and where, I see what they've done here, where we, none of us had the same figure.
Yeah.
They gave us a zero. So, it gives us a little bit more homework to do. Yes, item number eight, I believe, needs to be rectified at a future date.
Which we can do, correct?
And also, number 17, I didn't. And...
I think if everyone...
19.
Do they? Do they have this? I don't think anybody has this, because we just got this during the meeting, so...
Well, but the point was that...
We don't have to decide on...
No.
This is basically taking the discretionary spending and at least trying to categorize it so that we can put it in the budget for next year, correct? We're still going to have to have discussions on whether or not to spend that money, correct?
That's correct, Commissioners. You all allocated certain monies to number eight.
Which is a historical society for everybody who's wondering what number eight is. It's basically the funding for the historical society.
Right, and you all allocated money to number 17. So, as a suggestion, maybe we could take the lowest amount of money that's allocated to get us started, and then, we can, we can work from there. No sense putting zero in when you all agreed to fund it at some level.
Okay, so, put the lowest number in at that, and we can discuss it later?
Sure. I mean, we, once again, it wasn't that the zero was the objective of the board, it was just what number was in question. So, I think we take the lowest number, and we can come back later and...
But since I was the last one that spoke to David, I told him where we didn't agree to put a zero in. That's why he did that.
Sorry.
No, no, and I, that's a better suggestion, what you have made. I just, I want to tell you why he did that.
Wasn't me, David, it was...
Well, obviously, while you're feeling benevolent, I want to get a little bit of money rather than no money.
Yes, I think that's a better suggestion.
Okay. And then, what we can do is, I would like to revisit this budget in six months and see where we're at in our accounts. Just take a look at where we are in our taxes that we're collecting, and then, maybe we can revisit the budgets to make sure that we can possibly fund all the departments the way that they, on the wish list that we received for 58 million. So, what the report that was given to me this morning here shows, total general fund expenditures budget appropriations were 47,000, or 47,688,272.
That's correct.
You have estimated revenues at 48,829.
That's correct.
So, I'm looking at these two numbers. So, you got to remember, these guys have been getting beat up for a week now. The fact is that they started out at 858 million, and they came back down to 47,688. I think shows the commitment of the, of the...
858 million.
That was from the tax budget.
In August 20, yeah, yeah. And so, what we're saying here is, this is what was, what, certified by the tax, by the budget?
The resources, yes, was certified by the Budget Commission for total revenue of 66 million. But I think your point, Commissioner, which was well-taken, is we came out with a wish list in May that was passed that was in the $50 million range, and that amount's been whittled down to 47,688, as you had indicated.
Okay, so, now, what you're saying now is, we have a balanced revenue budget.
A balanced revenue budget.
Now, what I would propose is, in six months, revisit the, revisit the accounts for this year, take a look at the departments, because everybody is pretty much cut about how much, would you say, about 20%?
We took 25% from supplies and equipment. We took all of the funding from computers and computer upgrades and software, and we took 25% from training and travel, and we took 10% from miscellaneous expenses from every department. That's, that's correct.
And it looks like, from what I'm reading in the paper, instead of seeing what's written, is that we might have an extra million dollars that we could probably allocate next year, correct?
Yes. I need to point out that there was no need for any personnel cuts or any staffing changes.
Correct. So, everyone hunkered down and gave us a balanced revenue budget, which I appreciate.
I think that's great.
And John, well, we're talking about that, too. We also talked about working on an operating plan or a forecast. You're still going to do that?
We're working on that as we speak.
Five years?
That's right.
Okay, and then, I'd like a long-term, term capital improvement plan.
I think we just got one today.
Comprehensive of all funds?
When you call this?
That was a one-year plan we have, but we also have...
I'd like it for about 10 years.
What, this?
Schedule B, the capital improvement.
I'm not talking about Exhibit E, which we finally, I've never seen this. Have you, have you guys ever seen this document, something like this? Ever seen, Commissioner?
Yes.
Oh, have you? I've never seen anything like this. But we actually have, what we're doing with the money for the access, whether it be for any capital improvements, like the Board of Elections building, stuff like that, that we at least, you know, we have to, we still have to have that discussion for next year, but at least we allocated the funds for that.
We know it's there, if we need it, correct.
And it's, my understanding with GASB 34, we're going to be having that type of accounting where we're going to have to start, you know, allocating funds for our buildings, our county old buildings.
Some massive changes coming. This is the first time that we've ever actually looked at the budget from an operations standpoint compared to a certificate of revenue to see exactly where the core essential operations of county fell with respect to the certificate issued by the Budget Commission. So, it was, it was quite undertaking this year and different, different kind of look.
So, next year, they're going to be ready? You won't have to wait till...
It's been a learning experience, Commissioner.
Yeah. I'm asking the Budget Director, do you think, how are we going to go on in the future for the next first six months?[1735.66] Are you gonna be watching the...
Well, I think our staff, or my staff, is now versed in this, and I think we've actually trained ourselves to do this. We're gonna document all the moves that have been made for the direction of the board. So, when we have to update this, we'll have notes in place and ways to do this that'll be much more smooth, since this was the first time, at least my recollection, thirteen years. And I think this has been a good move. But we have documented all our changes that the board wished and the administrator, and we have this documented, so we, it'll be much easier to move along on this after six months or after a year when we do this for next year.
You send us quarterly reports on, on all the departments?
Monthly, Commissioner, yeah, those are actually monthly.
You'll be using these numbers now, right?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, good.
That's exactly.
Well, we're always using the numbers that are...
We give the most current, current data that we have.
The most current numbers. But you still didn't answer my question. Capital improvement plan. In other words, how many buildings are we planning on putting up, or what are we planning on, what capital improvements do we plan for the next five years is what I'd like us to work on.
I think that's a...
Not so much you, John, but I think the board.
Well, I'm talking about with Gatsby...
Projects and the duration.
Well, with Gatsby thirty-four, that's gonna force us to do that, right?
Yes, and the first step would be for me to sit down with the board, in my estimation, and the county administrator, and look at the priorities that the board has.
Right.
Talk about the projects that you desire. We can attach cost to that, give you a picture what the full-blown cost is of your ideas. And then if we need to whittle it down, we can do it.
We need to take a look at all the buildings that we own and what we're gonna do with them.
Right.
Correct.
Which is something I think we should do probably the first month next year.
I'd also like to go back to what Betty was talking about, where we're talking about zero in the areas that all three or two commissioners did not agree on, and go back and view those.
We'll highlight them.
Review them after if one of those issues comes up in the future. I prefer the zero that Betty talked about.
Yeah.
Would you rather have zero to the law somehow?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
Great.
Okay, so then the discretionary spending is going to stand at seventeen million one hundred and eighty-four thousand five hundred dollars.
Commissioners, we do need...
That's the total.
I do need some money for the historical society, because some of this is carryover money from last year. We haven't finished giving them the allocation that we granted them last year.
Right.
So, I do need the twenty-two thousand dollars. We guaranteed them sixty thousand dollars last year, they only used...
But you're only talking, we're talking about O-three right here. We've got next week to allocate them some more money.
I doubt that that's gonna, no, no.
John, we need, we need to be able to give the dispersed funds...
The balance that we owe them.
Why don't we do this? We're passing the budget with the way it stands that it was delivered to us this morning, okay? If you're gonna come back to us and want some more money, there's obviously some excess funds in there that we could pay, correct?
Yes.
Right.
So, why, why sit here and start having that, I mean, let me answer the, okay, tell you what.
I just don't want to come back in January and have you tell me why I didn't tell you in December, we owed them twenty-two thousand dollars.
No, Jim, excuse me.
Excuse me, just a second.
Go ahead.
If we owe them, why haven't we paid them?
Because they have not drawn the funds down yet, but they're distributing funds to the various activities of the county, so they have not drawn the complete sixty thousand, but I anticipate them doing that.
And they need them.
But it may come in January. They're, they're...
Just a point of information, if we've appropriated that money this year and it's been encumbered...
All appropriations lapse at the end of the year, you need to reappropriate.
If it's been appropriated and it's encumbered...
Did we encumber the complete sixty thousand, or did we just appropriate?
We just appropriated.
Why did we not encumber it?
Because I believe those entities that are gonna get it have to be defined in detail.
Yes, they do.
That's, that's a point, because that's what I wanted to say. They have to give us a report by the end of the year legally.
They have report requirements, exactly.
And we have not received it, and it has to be an itemized, line item, report on what they did with that money.
I'm comfortable leaving it zero, Commissioner, I just wanted to point out why the number was there, so that when we revisit in January, we don't say, why wouldn't we talk about that in December?
I am comfortable.
Okay.
Unless you receive that report, I haven't seen it.
I haven't seen it.
Let me ask you this. I mean, there's more than just the historical societies, other, other agencies that need reports. Who's responsible for getting those reports? Is it their responsibility?
Commissioner, Commissioner Vacy asked for some reports a few weeks back. We got the one from the chamber, we got the one from Glide, we followed them over to the board, and Main Street has been making ongoing reports, and they were forwarded over also. So, we, we have been keeping as current as possible on those.
Well, then let me make it, Ryan, could you check on the historical society? Since obviously you're getting pointed out on all these other reports, if you don't mind? Okay, thanks.
It's going through our offices anyway.
Okay, then if you, that's what, I guess that's what I was asking, who's responsible for making sure we get the reports? If it's a communication issue between the two groups, I just want to make sure we resolve it, so... And then I take it, Jim, you're gonna be reviewing these to see if any other, any other of these entities were gonna have to give us annual reports? Is that what Commissioner Vacy was asking?
Yes.
So, you're gonna...
Would you give them a copy? I think you have an extra copy. Maybe you could just do it by looking it over now, Jerry.
Now, let's not put them on the spot.
No.
Yeah, lawyers don't like that.
This is not the same one.
It's not the same one?
No, this is, no, this is fine. We'll give them one after the meeting.
It's in the mail.
I heard that for a while.
I just have one other question, perhaps this is a good time to state it, but the allocation that we have given to Lorraine County Transit in the past, we have done this on a monthly stipend, it's been set up by the budget department, and I would like to suggest that we look at the allocation that we've made to the Glide program and do that in the same fashion as opposed to giving them a lump sum payment of that dollar amount.
I agree. Consistency helps, so if that's what it takes, let's have, put everybody in the same playing field. I don't have a problem with that at all.
Sounds good.
We, we reduced them, our, the economic development, too, by a bit, didn't we?
I, I thought we were going to, commissioners, but this final version did not reduce the package down.
Well, then if we go to an annual, a monthly basis, then...
I think we go to one-twelfth, we should go to a one-twelfth allocation.
Okay, so let's go to a one-twelfth allocation, we'll revisit this in six months, see where we're at as a county, and if we can increase, then we can. If we have to decrease...
The money has been allocated, but it hasn't been, it hasn't been guaranteed.
Okay, that's...
What number?
I don't know, I would just, it's more of a...
I agree, yes. Jim, I want to go over the special revenue funds, too.
Just for everybody else, this is one of those deals where I think we're ahead of the curve, instead of trying to play catch-up. And again, I appreciate, Jim, the work, the hours you guys put in after I voiced my concerns.
Have to beat us with a stick.
Well, it was a professional manner. I just, you know, it was a little loud, but... According to you and I, maybe it was a professional.
Mr. Rokas, he has one more comment on the levy...
There's no crystal ball.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just stand it.
You can sit, okay.
Since he spoke to you, he's walking with a cane, too.
I feel like I aged here in about...
Show everybody what you're doing, I mean, show the hazards of your job.
Oh, okay, yeah, Jesus. Yeah, there are some hazards. For the commissioners, I'd also like to respectfully request that the total of the special revenue funds, and you should have a copy, it's this document, it's a formal state document that says annual appropriation of the county of Lorraine.
Is it here?
Yes, and it's a total of seventy-two funds, and the total is two hundred and two million seven hundred and eighteen thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. There usually isn't much discussion on these special revenue funds. These are typically funds like MRDD, Children's Services, who are governed by the board. However, under law, the county commissioners must and do either approve or disapprove the appropriations. Commissioners, if you turn to the, second to the last page in your booklet, second to the last page, at about the middle of the page, you'll see a figure called total special revenue, and that's the sum of all these special revenue funds of the county. And there are many. Our staff, by the way, has reviewed these. We don't see anything out of the ordinary on these things. As far as we're concerned, they seem to be within bounds with history. We do question some of these we have. The numbers seem in line. Again, these have been passed through by the board of these agencies, and we concur that the numbers look very reasonable.
Thanks, John. I'd like to thank, thank you, John, thank your department, your staff, and Jim, the auditors department, and the budget commission. I know it's been a lot of work, and, and we've put a lot more work on you by...
Thanks.
...forcing you and questioning, and I appreciate all that.
That's quite all right. Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioners, I want to add one, one brief thing. Somewhere in the resolution that's drafted, I would like it to address some outstanding resolutions that may be out there as commitments of funding levels by this board, and I'd like...
I'd prefer to treat this as one budget, and we're just gonna pass this budget. You want to talk, what are you talking about outstanding?
Well, what I'm suggesting is if we have a resolution saying we're going to fund a particular project at a certain level over a particular timeframe, I'd like this resolution to, of this funding to supersede any prior outstanding resolution.
What?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, wait a minute, not what?
Well, I think we ought to have a list of those things and not just blankly do it. This is the document, this is the appropriation, it's a living document, it can be changed up or down. But don't tie our hands with it.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Okay. Comments, reports, Mr. Cordez, administrator?
Just one quick issue, since we just spent over three hundred million dollars, I, it's rather trivial.
We haven't spent it yet.
The, the Amherst Township is asking for a couple of our two-legged chairs and some of our dented filing cabinets, and I would like a resolution just authorizing the purchasing director to be able to transfer that equipment to them. I know it doesn't compare to the three hundred million, but...
I did see it. We did get a copy.
We should let them have it. Other than that, I don't have anything further this morning.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Assistant County Prosecutor, Mr. Ennis?
Apparently, everybody stopped suing each other at Christmas, so I don't have any pending litigation for you.
How wonderful.
Christmas isn't here yet, don't worry.
Commissioners' report?
Commissioner Vacy?
Yes. The auditor had a request for some forms, for homestead forms and some other forms, and it's my understanding that we did nothing with them because they preferred the bid that was higher. There was two bids, and one was higher. Is it on here?
I, I'm not sure if it's, I know there's one, Madam Clerk, pull up the summary sheets, please. I believe under the order, there's this one request for printing services, I'm not sure if that's the same.
Well, my question is, do, if the forms are the same, isn't it up to us if we select the lower bid?
No, Commissioner, the, the, the issue that was brought before the board about five or six weeks ago rejected some bidding, some, excuse me, requisitions for printing because the highest bidder had been selected, and as justification, there was an indication that the requested did not feel that the lower bidders could do a quality job. It came before this board, and the board sent it back.
For questions, I think.
Yes.
And the letter we received was unacceptable, I believe.
At this point, I would allow Ms. Newton to, to address the issue as the purchasing director.
Well, nobody, if you notice, no one even has reviewed it or signed it as commissioners yet, so... Do you want to wait until we review it? Because we haven't reviewed it yet.
Well, I'm not sure if it's back here.
Yeah, we haven't, no one's ever signed it or reviewed them yet, and that's why I said we skipped over that and started going into the agenda.
Okay, well, I, I signed off on them, so I didn't know, you, you hadn't seen them yet?
No, no, well, you didn't sign it.
You didn't sign off on all of them, there were questions, and then I think we all had some questions. When I reviewed them, I just returned the packet.
Okay, I knew that this would be a major issue, because those homestead forms and our applications and the applications for deed, for review, what do you call that?
I don't know the particular form.
It's a CAU, Current Agricultural Applications, and those are needed, and the homestead forms are needed, because they have to be sent out, those people have to get them back in here.
Aye, again, Mr. Commissioner, there's...
All right, we can, we can go back to it if you want.
Yeah, why don't we wait till we...
So, we have to review that, so that could be part of it, too.
Okay, anyway, we're under the commissioners, right? Okay, Yvonne, I gave you one of these that was a real thick one, but I have another one here, and I wanted to ask you, what are we doing with NACO, purchasing through NACO? Because I know that the, the savings is like eighty percent on a lot of high-usage items and sixty percent, sixty-three percent up on a lot of them.
Correct.
But I wanted to give you this one.
Yeah, we've been using NACO underneath Office Depot and Bobo's because they have, they're underneath our Thomas W. Ruff. We've been using them for probably about a year and a half now, so we have been utilizing the NACO contracts.
Well, here's another piece of that large catalog, because some of these are in here...
They were in our association, talking to, with us also.
Yeah, I'm sure they were.
Yeah.
Did you get one of these, or do you need this one?
No, I got plenty of that information sheet, they gave us stacks of it.
Catalogues and stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, Office Depot was there also.
Real good. I guess that was all I have under the commissioners, other than the healthcare, the insurance, do you want to talk about that now?
If there's any discussion that we're going to have on this issue, I think that we should have it in executive session. We are entitled to do that, it's a personnel issue, and I would prefer to have that discussion there first.
Agreed.
Do you, do you think, is it agreeable, Jerry, that it's a personnel issue? Funding of the employees' portion of the healthcare.
We're discussing it as part of our bargaining agreement contract, so under that guise, it would be proper to do it in an executive session.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Blair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd just like to mention the National Resource Assistance Council, which was formed this year and is in charge of distributing about one point seven million dollars to projects in a three-county area, of which Lorraine County is one, it's part of the Ohio Public Works Commission, and we are having our final meeting a week from tomorrow, Friday, December the twentieth, and we've had two rounds that we've distributed approximately one point two million dollars. We've got about five hundred thousand dollars left, and we have three applications, so we will be reviewing those applications Friday morning, December twentieth at nine a.m. those applications Friday morning, December 20th at 9:00 a.m. at the Agricultural Center. And the other thing I wanted to extend on behalf of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, congratulations to Andrew Sarason, son of Scott and Rebecca Sarason, who has been named, I believe, the first Lorraine County Rhodes Scholar. I'm sure you read it in the paper, how extremely proud his parents must be of this young man. He's attending Notre Dame University. He's a graduate of a Lurie Catholic High School. And, you know, sometimes you think these people are bookie people, but Andrew is also a member of a Lurie Catholics basketball team, so I think he's a well-rounded, wonderful young individual, and I know his younger brother very well, and I just think Scott and Rebecca ought to be real proud of him, and I'm sure that Lorraine County is. So that's my comment for today.
Thank you. I have really nothing to say except that it's 11:30. We have to go into executive session. We haven't reviewed this pile of paperwork yet. Would, how would everybody feel about meeting back at 1 o'clock or 1:30 to discuss the, because we're in a time, because I know you guys haven't even, I mean, most of us haven't even reviewed the paperwork that we have to vote on, correct? You haven't reviewed the paperwork. I don't like looking at it until the county minister looks at it. Or would you guys prefer to go into executive session, come out, and then have that discussion?
You need, you and Betty need to review it?
Yes.
And, and Jim?
Yep.
I've already seen it, so I'll save you some time.
Okay. Yeah, here. You missed this one here.
Yeah, I probably didn't sign it until we decide what to do with those.
Okay. What's the pleasure, I'll tell you what, what's the pleasure of the Board? Would you guys like to go into executive session?
Can we just go to correspondence one minute? Because there's one issue on here, number four. Madam Clerk, would you read that?
Oh, okay. Why don't I move for the, not move for the waiver, but move for the waiver of the Board Correspondence, except number four?
Thank you.
And five.
And five. Okay.
Second.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Number four on the correspondence, public notice of receipt of public application anti-degradation received by the Ohio EPA. Application was submitted by Lorraine County 2 landfill at 43502 Oberlin Lurie Road, Oberlin, Ohio. Application is for approval to treat a 10-year, 24-hour storm event of stormwater runoff. Treated wastewater is are to be discharged into the Squire's Ditch. A review of this application will be conducted before deciding whether to allow a lowering of the water quality. Additional information, contact Ohio EPA's Division of Surface Water Attention and Permits Processing Unit at P.O. Box 1049 Columbus, Ohio, 43216, within 30 days of the snow which was dated December 2nd, 2002.
The thing that concerns me here is where it says deciding whether to allow a lowering of the water quality. That bothers me. I think, you know, we're, we're trying to upgrade the water quality in Lorraine County, and here's EPA claiming on one hand, they want us to upgrade it, and then over here, they're saying whether they're going to decide to lower the water, water quality. I think we should, or I'm asking my colleagues to join me in sending them a letter. If I'm correcting that, I mean, if I'm understanding that correctly, isn't that what it's stating, Ron, that they're asking to lower the water quality?
I haven't seen the letter. I'm not really sure. I, I'd like to review everything else that's in that packet, because there's usually a substantial report that comes along with those letters.
So it looks like here for additional information, contact the Ohio EPA. So why don't you contact the Ohio EPA, get that information for us, so we can take a look at what they're really doing? How's that?
And if they have to, you know, make a decision to reduce the water quality, I think that we should voice our opinion.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
Good point. That's, that's all I have.
I think Bob's ready to talk to the Oberlin people again about that one. Oh, okay. Commissioner Blair, you want number five?
I just had a question. I believe that Mr. Billman asked for additional information from the Sheffield Middle School, and I think that they provided it.
Yes, number five is somewhere in the works for the Board. I asked for Mr. Billman's recommendation. He sent it over. I covered it, and it's being routed to the Commissioners now for, for a Board agenda for approval tonight. So there is action on, being taken on number five.
Thank you.
So we vote? Where are you going? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs...
Aye, second.
Vasey?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Okay. We skipped it.
We're playing hopscotch.
You know, we popped around. This is something rare that we've done. Usually, we're pretty well consistent and organized, but the fact that at 8:30 this morning, we received our budget, as you can tell, a lot of people didn't do what they usually do because of the budget, so we've been hopping around because we know certain, certain documents haven't been reviewed yet.
Well, I, I assume section B resolutions was what was being held, but so also is old business?
No, we're gonna talk about it right now.
I didn't want to.
Do you wanna talk about it ever?
Yeah.
Okay, well, what, then suggest to us what you wanna do.
Well, I tell you what, it was in the budget. Okay, let's talk about old budget. Let's just talk about old business. What the heck? Let's go. Just for you, Elizabeth, it's Christmas time. End of citizens, okay, I don't...
Under old business, Community Development Department, number one, need to approve the Lorraine County Building Codes effective January 1st, 2003. Public hearings were held on September 12th and 26th, 2002. The building code incorporates the 1999 Ohio Building Officials Association Ohio Residential Code for one, two, and three family dwellings and can be adopted by any township of Lorraine County, of which the Board of Trustees passes a resolution requesting that its township be a district regulated by the Lorraine County Building Code.
Do you mind if I say, let, make a comment, because I made a comment last week when we didn't have the budget. I see it's, in our budget hearings, we allocated some money for this, but basically, that means we haven't decided whether or not we're gonna spend it, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I think, my only statement regarding this is I, I like the, I like what we're doing. I see what we're doing, but I don't like the path that we're going down. I'd prefer to see something that, I don't wanna do it in bits and pieces. I'd rather do it the way we should do it. But what I haven't seen yet, and I'd like to see, I think Wood County, when the people came here, presented that we could go there and get their information, is how much rep, okay, let me rephrase it. How much taxes are we going to get when you tax people building their homes? You're gonna charge fees, what, you know, what, no, you know, the building code fees, okay, for, for inspections? I'd like to know how much are we going to receive? Let me see.
100 home permits.
Yeah, this is based on, I was, I was talking in a countywide, we give you 250, $300,000 to have a full staff department, and how long would it take to get our money back, or at least break even, if we do it right, right away the first time? Instead of doing, we're gonna do a little bit here, we're gonna wait a little bit, and then we're gonna do this community first, this community second, this community third. I was looking at...
Commissioner?
Yes, but wait a minute, you don't... You're, you're talking about a figure that you can't possibly have because you don't know about participation.
Give us, I understand where you wanna go. It's a little bit of a directional change. Give us four weeks to put together a comprehensive proposal based upon some new, new initiatives here, and we'll bring you back some information on that and a, and a, and a plan.
And, and that's okay. I mean, I'd like to see the plan, the original plan compared with this plan, compared with that plan.
Right, I understand.
So are we gonna hold off then voting on this until you come back with those plans?
Pleasure of the Board. That's fine.
Because there's no, I don't see, I mean, how long would it take to have those plans presented to the Board?
I'm, I'm asking for four weeks. It is the holiday season.
So after, so we can wait four weeks?
Thank you.
Oh, look at that. Is four weeks fine with the Board?
Ryan, is that acceptable?
Oh, it's not fine with me. I would like to adopt it today. I've been waiting for 35 years, and I thought that we ought to be able to do it today.
Adopting the codes doesn't have anything to do with how we go about enforcing and regulating the code.
No, I understand that, but I don't wanna adopt a, a code and not have it properly funded. That's, ooh!
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's bad luck.
I wasn't throwing anything.
See, she's out.
No, I'm not. I got too much junk.
You upset her.
Man, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you did.
We're gonna need a group hug after this meeting today. I mean, is that okay, to wait four weeks for everything, or, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, it's, like Betty said, it's been 35 years. What's four weeks?
Well, but I was trying to promote it to being adopted today, even though there are some missing ingredients. At least we are approving the building code. I would prefer if we could take action, but if there's not a majority of the Board that shares my opinion, I have no alternative but to wait. I'd sure, I'm tired of waiting.
Okay.
And it's the beginning of the year, and we ought to be able to tell these people that they have this option beginning January 1. I think that was the focus, and the fact that we've already had two public hearings on this, one on September 12th, another one on the 26th. And in addition to that, then in October, Mr. Twining went out to Carlisle Township to have another meeting there to apprise the townships of what was in the offing and what was being thought about and planned, and I'm disappointed that we couldn't take action today.
Both for four weeks?
Yes. And number two, under Recorders Department, I'd authorize Lorraine County Auditor to continue the special fund per Ohio Vice Code Section 317.09 and 317.321 for increase in fees imposed by the Lorraine County Recorder for the purpose of supplementing equipment needs of the county recorder on an annual basis effective January 1st, 2003, expiring December 31st, 2003.
Commissioners, as I informed you last week, we got some miscommunications on this, but this must be done before December 15th, not the end of the year. So this is the last meeting, and it needs to be done.
If we don't pass it, we lose out on all the funds.
Pretty much. So, you know, we...
The recorder loses them.
Well, we do, too.
We all, the county does.
I, I know we, it was indicated that we had to the end of the year, but our primary view, it is December 15th. It's one of them quirky ones. The recorder has to submit this by October 1st. We have until December 15th to adopt either her submission or an alternative methodology.
Okay, and so what's the methodology that's submitted to us today?
It is the continuation of the previous year allocation of three to recorder, one to the general fund. The recorder had previously asked for the entire allocation and a five-year resolution.
And tell us again, what's the allocation?
Excuse me, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
What's the gross allocation?
No, no. My question is, what is the present allocation for this year?
Three to recorder, one, two...
Three to the recorder?
Three and one.
And how much does that one generate for the general fund?
Mr. Ocasie?
$3 generates about $300,000. I, I'd rather go back on my records. It's probably gonna be around $100,000.
For the $1?
I'd have to, I want, I'm ballparking, and I'd rather go back and be accurate on...
The recorders here shouldn't have that information.
Well, but I just wanted to verify.
I had the statistics last week. I didn't bring them this week.
I just wanna verify the breakdown. You're saying, once again, three of it goes to the recorder and one comes to the general fund. It's not the other way around?
Correct.
That's correct.
The three goes to equipment, the one goes to general fund, and my understanding was we're using that general fund to offset their IT person. Is that what?
However you want to, yeah.
That's what was my understanding.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
The $3 goes into the special revenue fund solely for equipment?
And the one that helps offset the IT personnel?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted to hear.
Madam Recorder is in attendance.
I don't know if she wanted to speak, or... Mary Ann?
Morning.
Morning, Mary Ann.
How's everybody today? Long day, right?
It's only half on.
You were perfectly correct, because last year, you had taken the, a dollar away for my systems administrator. The $3 comes to the recorder's office to use, but as I indicated last, last week, that the amount that goes into the general fund is quite sizable, and that we are only one of the very few offices that does produce revenue for the general fund and the operations of the other county offices, Commissioners.
It's just a, not, oh, it's tax, revenue tax, same thing? Or do you look at that as different?
Fees.
Fees?
Fees. It's fees, Commissioner.
I look at all revenue or taxes that go into the one fund anyway. That's what we discussed today. There's 300, 300 million of them today?
This, this can't be confused with any type of taxes at all.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the Board? Keep it? Change?
I move that we continue for 2003 what we duplicated in 2002.
Okay, I'll second. Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vasey?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Are we under public comment now, or what do we do?
Excuse me?
I agree. Okay, then move for executive session. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Thanks, John.